Good afternoon, everyone. We are now Facebook Live for our meeting of March the 19th. We will first stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, followed by invocation from Alderman Sistruck, and then a moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Alderman Sistruck, if you would, please.
Loving God, may we feel led and guided today by your grace as we manage our responsibilities to our community, provide the light and wisdom we need for understanding and clarity, strengthen us inwardly. Amen.
Thank you, everyone. We appreciate everybody being here this evening. We have our first order of business will be approval of the official agenda with consented items, and I'm going to call the board's attention to an item that is on at your table. It was an emergency purchase of an Influent pump for the wastewater treatment plant. We had a failure, and so it is an emergency purchase. I have would suggest that it might be put on consent. It's under Mayor's Business, Item B, but I will let the board make that determination. But anyway, just so you know, that paperwork is in front.
Consent.
All right, Alderman Vaughn, if that's okay with you. Do I hear any objection to consent for that particular item? Seeing none, I will put that on consent then. So I need a motion to approve the official agenda with the amended consented items. Alderman Moreland, anything for you? Any changes? Alderman Rupp, any changes for you?
No ma'am.
Alderman Brooks, any changes?
No ma'am.
No ma'am, thank you.
Alderman Sistruck?
I have a motion that I would like for us to consider tabling, in that I've not received any additional information to help with making a decision, and that is under Fire Department F-1. If we could table that to next week to give the Fire Department a chance to give us a fuller package to help us with making a decision about that. We appreciate the Fire Department, and we appreciate the efforts that they've put into, excuse me, identifying this grant, and we want to be as supportive as we possibly can, but we also want to make sure that we make good decisions about the city's resources. So I would like to table that particular motion.
Okay, so you're making a motion to table that?
I am.
Okay, that would be to table F-1. Do I have a second to that?
Second.
Ma'am, can I ask a question before we vote?
Well, let me get a second, and then we'll do that. A second from Alderman Rupp, okay. And, all right, now Alderman Vaughn?
Chief Johnson, is okay with you?
When we're ready tonight, we got information, my sister, some information I'm sharing, so I'm prepared to, we can wait until this morning, it's gonna be that, that's not a time, but if it's more approved, so, by the month of August, so, and I'll look how we can do it.
Okay, all right, I have a motion and a second. I'm sorry?
Well, that begs some more discussion.
Okay, well.
The chief's ready, and she wants to pull it, and I'm not sure where we should land on it, because we don't want to hold them up, but if there's a good reason to pull it, then we need to know more about it.
Okay, well, then if you'd like to have some discussion on whether or not to, this is simply a motion to table, so if you want to withdraw your second to table?
Yeah.
Or you leave it on the agenda for discussion?
Yes, please.
All right.
May I add a second to it?
All right, then we'll go with the vote. Vice Mayor Perkins will do a second, we'll vote for that, and then we'll move from there. So if you would answer yea or nay.
I think Alderman Sistruck asked for a second.
Alderman Sistruck?
And while Chief Yarborough is prepared tonight, I'd like to say that I've not seen the information, and I'm reluctant to make such a large financial decision essentially on the fly. We do have a work session Tuesday, if you wanted to know.
No.
All right, never mind.
That is a one-subject work session.
Okay, all right, never mind.
They'll pick it up, so.
Okay.
All right, so with that, let's go ahead and see if there's.
I was just gonna come in.
Yes, sir.
I may I think that in light of the mayor, the fire chief's statement just then, his information he wants to disseminate to the board about the Fire Department, which is going to entail, you know, of course, Station Five, personnel, things like that, that probably we need to hear as a board, so I would suggest that we.
Well, I have a motion to table, and I have a second, so let's see how that vote goes, and then we will go after that, okay? That would be, leave it on the agenda for discussion, assuming that the vote goes otherwise. So if you would, please answer yea or nay, as the city clerk calls your name.
Alderman Moreland, yea.
Alderman Sistruck?
Yea.
Alderman Rupp?
Yea.
Alderman Brooks?
Yea.
Alderman Beatty?
Nay.
Vice Mayor Perkins?
Yea.
Alderman Vaughn?
Nay.
All right, by vote of four to three, we will table this item and bring it back. Chief, if you bring it back at the next board meeting, it will be the first meeting in April, okay?
And I have one other comment. I think, Chief, you can go ahead and be working on the grant, if you'd like to, and you can certainly provide us the information that you put together, and we can be studying that in the meantime, if we have any questions. Thank you.
All right, anything further? Vice Mayor Perkins?
No ma'am, no, thank you.
Alderman Vaughn?
No ma'am, thank you, ma'am.
All right, thank you. Well, with that, I need a motion to approve the agenda as amended, so do I have a motion?
Second.
Motion.
Oh, thank you, Alderman Rupp. I'll give you the second if you would prefer it. All right, I'm gonna, Alderman Rupp has the motion, and Alderman Brooks has the second. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. All right, I will read the consented items. First is consideration of the minutes of the February 20th, '24 recess meeting of the Mayor and Board of Aldermen of the City of Starkville. Second is consideration of the minutes of the March 1, 2024 work session of the Mayor and Board of Aldermen of the City of Starkville. Under Mayor's Business, we have consideration of a resolution and an application for a community project funding STAG grant for funding to upgrade and expand the Ernest E. Jones Wastewater Treatment Plant. B, that was put on consent, is request emergency authorization to rent a Godwin's pump for bypass for the Influent backup for the monthly rental amount of $7,218.50 from Hydra Service, Inc., and that paperwork is in front of you, board. Under Board Business, we have A, which is a resolution of the Mayor and Board of Aldermen of the City of Starkville, Mississippi, authorizing and directing the issuance of general obligation Public Improvement Bonds Series 2024, Street Improvements Project of the City of Starkville, Mississippi, in the maximum principal amount of $5 million in one or more federally taxable or tax-exempt series to provide funds for the authorized purposes as described herein, prescribing the form and incidence of the bonds, providing for the levy of taxes for the payment of the bonds, providing for the sale of bonds, making provision for maintaining the tax-exempt status of the bonds, approving and authorizing the distribution of a preliminary official statement, authorizing the execution and distribution of an official statement pertaining to the sale of the bonds, authorizing the execution of a continuing disclosure agreement pertaining to the bonds, acknowledging and authorizing the execution of post-issuance compliant procedures and for related purposes. Under Department Business, under Community Development Planning, we have Number One, which is consideration of appointing Joe Fertizzi, the sole applicant, as Ward One Planning and Zoning Commissioner. Two is consideration of calling for two public hearings to amend the Unified Development Code. Under Engineering, we have Number One, consideration of approving permission to advertise for the Lampkin-Mongomery Intersection Improvement Project. Two is consideration of approving the letter agreement with Neil Schaefer, Inc., for professional services related to the Stark Hospital Extension Project in an hourly not-to-exceed amount of $10,000. Three is consideration of accepting the low-term bid from Falcon Contracting Company, LLC, and the first alternate term bid from Gregory Companies, LLC, doing business as Murfree Paving, for the 2024 term bid contract for annual asphalt overlays and authorization for the mayor to execute a construction contract with a low bidder and first alternate bidder. Four is consideration of accepting the low-term bid from T.L. Wallace Construction, Inc., and the first alternate term bid from Pavement Restorations, Inc., for the 2024 term bid contract for pavement surface treatments and authorization for the mayor to execute a construction contract with a low bidder and first alternate bidder. Five is request authorization to advertise for bids for the Old Mayhew Roadway Improvement Project. Six, request authorization to enter into an agreement with independent contractor Mark Shaw as an engineering inspector in the City Engineering and Starkville Utilities Departments. Under Finance Administration, we have acceptance of the February 2024 financial statements. Three is consideration of naming Renasant Bank as the Citibank Depository for April 1, 2024 through March 31, 2026. Consideration of accepting the fiscal year 9/30/22, 2022 audit of the City of Starkville as presented by Watkins Ward and Stafford CPA's PLLC. Under the Fire Department, we have request authorization for Tyler Davis to travel to Columbus, Georgia, to attend the Swift Water Rescue Technician Course at an approximate cost of $900. Under Human Resources, Number One, we have authorization to hire David Jelenic as a civil engineer co-op in the Engineering Department. Two is request authorization to hire Tyrone Hazlett as a reserve police officer in the Starkville Police Department. Three is consideration of the discipline recommended by sanitation director Chris Smiley as a result of IA numbers 03192024 for Starkville sanitation worker. Under Parks, we have consideration of approval of the low bid from Econ Construction, Inc., in the amount of $999,442 for the J.L. King Park Splash Pad Expansion Project. Two is consideration of approving the quote from MagCor via state contract number 8200069093 in the amount of $26,711 for tables and chairs for the new Needmore Center. Under Police, we have request approval for Corporal Brandon Gladney to attend the Reed Technique of Investigative Interview and Advanced Interrogation Course held at the Irondale Civic Center in Irondale, Alabama, April 2nd through the 5th, 2024, at a total advanced cost not to exceed $1,230 for course and lodging. B is request approval for Animal Control Officer Taylor Nolan to attend the annual training conference hosted by the Humane Society of the United States, being held in San Antonio, Texas, May 15th through 18th, 2024, with an estimated advanced cost of $700. And C, request approval to apply for a 100% reimbursable grant in the amount of $107,793.75 from the fiscal year '25 Mississippi Department of Homeland Security in the area of SWAT and LPR equipment. Sanitation Department is request approval to purchase two 60-inch X-Mark Laser E-Series Zero-Turn mowers and one 60-inch X-Mark Radius S-Series Zero-Turn mower from Evergreen AG at a total cost of $29,009 from state contracts 412378702 and 412843927. Under Utilities, Number One, we have consideration of accepting the low bid and alternates for the Isaiah Lane Elevated Water Tank Rehabilitation Project from GNL Tank Sand Blasting and Coatings, LLC, in the amount of $409,115, and authorizing the mayor to execute a construction contract. Two is request authorization to accept the lowest quote from Anixter for FLIR infrared camera for substation and three-phase truck line distribution inspections in the amount of $6,928.50. Three is request authorization to execute postage meter renewal agreement with Quadrient Leasing USA, Inc., for $217.50 monthly for 36 months. And then four, request authorization for the mayor to execute a contract renewal with Chempro Service for herbicide spraying for utility easements. And that concludes the consent agenda items.
Thank you, Mayor.
Yes, sir, my pleasure. All right, next on our agenda is the announcements and comments, and I really don't have anything other than we won baseball games, and it was lovely to visit with LSU people, and they seem to have a really nice weekend, despite the fact that they did not take the series from us. But they, I heard many stories about hospitality of Starkville and MSU, and I think that's a wonderful thing for us to be a place where people enjoy coming, whether they win or lose. So anyway, I think that's great, and we've got, we get to play host to the women's basketball team for the NIT first round on Thursday night, so it's, we're being hospitable this week, and I think that's a great thing. So nothing else from me. Alderman Moreland, anything from you?
No ma'am.
Alderman Rupp?
No ma'am.
Alderman Brooks?
No ma'am.
Alderman Beatty? Alderman Sistruck?
No ma'am.
Vice Mayor?
No ma'am, ma'am, thank you.
Alderman Vaughn?
No ma'am, thank you, ma'am.
All right, thank you. All right, next we have citizens' comments. You have three minutes, of which to make any comments to the board. We will listen to complaints, concerns, compliments, or all the above. Mr. Turner?
Good evening, Mayor Moreland, this is Allen Turner, Ward 7. Citizens have complained of this lady that goes around leaving bags everywhere, using profanity, racist words, agitating the police department, tying them up on nonsense. We need to do something, because to open weapon law, you get to the pressure point, a person might use it, and it, or need to get ahead of it. This person, that she's just uses it for attention, but sometimes you can do it to the wrong person, or the, the, um, citizens also, thanks to the overlay that we have had of the streets that we've been working on. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Turner. Anyone else? Anyone else? All right, seeing none, I will close it for citizens' comments. We have public hearings this evening, so, and no public appearances, but we do have public hearings. So Mr. Havilin, the first two are yours.
First one we have is SE 24-01. This is a request by Sarah Tadlock for a special exception to allow for a detached dwelling placed at 122 Yellow Jacket Drive in AC Zoning District. You can see on the image on the left, that is Jackson that's running on the right side, north and south, and it's, this lot is about, I think it's the second lot when you turn west on Yellow Jacket, on the north side of Yellow Jacket. The applicant is seeking a special exception to build a single detached house. The use charge in Section 313 of the Unified Development Code requires special exceptions for a single detached house in that zone of district. The request was noted according to the UDC. Twenty-two property owners of record with 160 feet were notified directly by mail. The request and a legal ad was published on February 23rd, 2024. The sign was also posted at a conspicuous location, and as of this date, we receive no response to the notification. These are the eight criteria for special exception review and approval. The Planning and Zoning Commission reviewed this request on March 12th, 2024, and voted unanimously in favor of recommending approval. If there are any questions.
Okay, any questions in Mr. Havilin? Alderman Brooks?
The zoning on this, this property, on that property, it has kind of changed over the years, has not.
If you go back in all the zoning records, it used to always be commercial, and then for a brief period of time, it switched to residential, it was in the UDC, and what was in the comprehensive plan, it went back to commercial.
Okay, all right, I thought I'd see.
It's kind of been back and forth. I think there was some development pressure on it that seems to have eased, so now you're probably, as people build in this area, you'll get more requests like that.
Yeah, because we've got some new houses across the road.
Across, just almost directly across the street, yes.
And the other thing I was going to ask, they are aware, I'm just working, that's, part of that's in the flip side, correct?
Yeah, it's mainly in the rear of the property on the north side, and they are aware of it, and they're going to address that in their building permit.
Okay, all right, I'll send it, ma'am, thank you.
Anyone else before I, is the applicant here this evening? The applicant's not here this evening? Really? Okay. All right, I'll open it as a public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak to this matter, now would be the time. Anyone wishing to speak to this matter either for or against the consideration of the special exception? Anyone? Seeing none, I will close it as a public hearing. Does the board wish to entertain a motion, or wait for the applicant to come visit with us?
I move to approve.
Okay, you got a motion to approve? Okay. Do I have a second? Do I have a second? I need a second.
Second.
I have a second from Alderman Moreland, okay? All right, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Okay, let's do a roll call, if you would, please. Answer yea or nay, as the city clerk calls your name.
Alderman Moreland?
Yea.
Alderman Sistruck?
Yea.
Alderman Rupp?
Yea.
Alderman Brooks?
Nay.
Alderman Beatty?
Yea.
Vice Mayor Perkins?
Yea.
Alderman Vaughn?
Nay.
So Alderman Beatty, were you a yea or a nay?
Yea.
You were a yea? Okay, so by a vote of five to two, the motion carries, so the special exception is granted, okay? Did you ask them to show up?
At the Planning and Zoning Commission, we always tell the citizens their cases are over with the next meeting, so they're made aware of that, and they're also made aware of the application process.
Okay, disappointed that they chose not to be here to represent themselves, okay? All right, next item?
This is UE 24-01. This is for the Hub. This is a request from Michigan State University for a use exception to allow for replacement of a monument sign at the Hub Building located at 301 University Drive in a T-5D zoning district. And I'm pretty sure by, fairly with that, this property is. The Hub is renovating the front entrance plaza along University Drive and proposing a new monument sign as part of the renovation. The circle is indicating the location of where they're proposing it. In a T-5D zoning district, monument signs are only permitted on a corner lot with a use exception if the existing building exceeds the maximum setback of that zoning district, which is what does, because that building precedes our zoning. Monument signs are also limited to a size requirement, and this is what they're proposing, six feet high, 60 square feet is the limit in the code. And this proposal meets those requirements. The request was noted and recorded with the UDC. Fourteen property owners of record were notified directly by mail. The legal ad was published on February 21st, 2024, and the sign was placed on the property, and as of this date, we receive no response to the notification. And on the screen are the six criteria for use exception approval and for the approval when it lies within a four-based district. And just one reminder of the difference in a special exception and a use exception. A special exception runs with the land, a use exception is just with the applicant. So if this building were to be sold again, back to another bank, and they tried to use the sign, they would have to come back forward with a use exception to use the sign.
Okay, all right.
On March 12th, 2024, the Planning and Zoning Commission voted unanimously to recommend approval of the request.
Okay, thank you. Any questions in Mr. Havilin? All right, seeing none, is that?
Let me ask you.
Yes.
I'm sorry. So I noticed what you said, you made a little bit, there's been a change in the UDC about that setback, because we had this issue a number of times.
Correct.
And that was not specified, and we, we.
Correct, and what it is, is if you redevelop the site, you take full advantage of the density in a four-based district that's allowed by right, then you kind of lose the ability to have a monument sign, because you're too close to the road.
Right.
But if you're an existing building that's already set back beyond the setback, then this is just a way to allow it. And it's allowed by right on interior lots, but on corner lots, it's a site issue, and so it's one of the reasons we have the extra process review.
That was a good move, to make that change in the UDC, because I know we struggled with that at times.
Yeah, it came up in the old code a lot when it was just an exception in four-based districts, and so this is just a way to address that, fairly as possible.
Yeah, that's all we're.
Okay, all right, anyone else? All right, and I don't see the applicant.
His advocate is not here.
Is not here either. You are not emphasizing that.
No, I was texting him about, he's opening a bid in Columbus, and he just was not able to.
Okay, all right, well, case in rime, a rime, but let's see if we can't get those folks emphasized that they need to be here to represent their interest. All right, I will open it as a public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak to this item now would be the opportunity to do so, either for or against.
This building been getting a lot of attention. Our, uh, we see hood, but we don't even know what that gonna specify in, uh, we, we just curious.
All right, thank you, Mr. Turner. Anyone else? Anyone else? Seeing no one, I will close it as a public hearing and entertain a motion.
Move to approve, I'll be consistent.
I have a motion from Alderman Rupp. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second from Alderman Moreland, thank you. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Okay.
I gotta be consistent.
Okay.
We had that rule, we've been planning the zoning for eight years.
I understand, I would have preferred that myself, but there we are. So by a vote of six to one, motion carries. So if you will notify the applicant and tell them, please, thank you. All right. Moving along, we have a second public hearing and consideration for the building located at 201 Ruth Road. We'll let the code enforcement officer provide the first.
May I please, the council, or more, could we consolidate things off, let her present all of them, and just one hearing?
We have been advised in the past, Mr. Goodwin, that doing them one at a time preserves the record better, so we'll continue, we will continue in that vein.
Sign, I thought I'd ask.
I appreciate that, thank you.
I filed a response today, this is electronic, and I like it.
We will, we will provide that time for you here in just a few minutes.
Thank you.
Officer Perez?
You gonna do the lights, Alderman Vaughn? Thank you, sir. Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Board of Aldermen. I'm Officer Sarah Perez, Code Enforcement, Starkville Police Department, and I'm here today to present a consideration for 21-1911 on the property at 201 Ruth Road, Starkville, Mississippi, 39759, parcel ID 159J-00-028.01. nine J dash zero zero dash zero two eight dot zero one. This property is owned by Dwight Price Hawk. This is the deed for the property. The first inspection was on January fourth, and photos taken from the roadway show the structure being dilapidated, having damage to the roof and other areas of the structure. On January nineteenth, I issued a notice of violation to the property owner. On January twentieth, I returned to the property and took photos once again from the roadway showing no change to the property has been made. I obtained an administrative inspection warrant from the Judge, Judge Kelly on January twentieth. On January twenty-first, I returned to the property with the administrative inspection warrant and took photos on the property showing no changes have been made. In apartment one, where Mr. Sylvester Dollington lives. On January twenty-second, I sent a second notice of the violation to the property owner, certified mail. I also sent a certified mail copy of the administrative inspection warrant. And on February seventh, I sent certified mail a notice of the public hearing for the first hearing. February seventh also posted on the front window at City Hall, and February eighth posted on the property. These photos were taken from the roadway. On February twenty-second, the final inspection, photos taken from the roadway once again. On March sixth, I issued a public, a second public hearing notice, certified mail sent to the property owner, posted at City Hall in the front window, as well as posted on the property itself. Photos taken from the roadway showing no progress has been made.
Alright, thank you. Any questions from Officer Perez? Okay, Mr. Goodwin, now if you would like to.
I have a question to Officer Perez.
Alright, well, if you'd like to come up to the podium, we're going to need to be able to hear you.
Yes, ma'am.
So.
I'll sit by.
Right, yes, sir. If you would make your, could you make your presentation first and then we'll let Officer Perez answer questions? How about that? Does that work?
Sure.
Okay. You want, you get some light, there we go, thank you.
I will let my client appear also up here, if you don't mind, I'll try to guide him through it. Stand right there, so somebody will. Can you hear me?
I can.
Mr. Price, there was a document filed today with the city, and have you had a chance to review that document?
I've read through it.
And this document, this document I prepared after consultation with you?
Correct.
Under the, under the parts that are fact-based regarding the selective prosecution and the part, the question they apply for real advantage, which also discusses the property, is all that information true and correct according to your best feeling?
I believe it is.
Now, Mr. Price, let me ask you this in particular. With respect to parcel one right there, you would admit that that parcel needs, that that, that structure on there needs work?
It does.
The statute rather than the notice also provides that the, what can be considered is securing the abandoned or dilapidated building. Now, in this, in your opinion, is this building dilapidated to the point at least to be destroyed?
No.
Mr. Price, do you recall looking at the assessed valuation that the tax assessor put on that parcel?
It's been a few days.
Okay, but isn't it true that the building is, is, is shown to have some value on that and we've attached it to our, our response, am I correct? And the tax assessor said the building has a value thirty-six thousand, or thirty-six thousand five hundred and sixty dollars into the true value. Is that accord with your estimate or a little better or a little worse?
I think it's probably worth more than that.
Now, the property, rather than the structure, obviously there's somebody living in one of those.
Correct.
Am I correct? Is, is it open to the elements in the place that he's living?
No.
Can the other openings into, into that structure, can they be secured by nailing up plywood or doors or putting windows in there temporarily so that nobody can go in there?
All the windows are there and all the doors have locks on them.
So there's no way to enter the building?
They can break in, but not walk in.
Is there traffic, foot traffic in the area with people that don't have places to live or, or things like that? Is it a rundown area?
No, there's not much traffic around there at all.
Are there any kids that live in there, families of children that live in that area?
There could be, but I'm not aware of them.
On Ruth Road, after you turn, turn off from that plain village, you turn on this road, this road kind of bends around and runs to the south, am I right? Are there any other residences on Ruth Road where people actually live?
There's some due east of there.
And what's, who, who owns those residences?
Ryan Gray.
R.I. And has Mr. Gray ever complained about that property?
Not to my knowledge.
What about south of there?
South of there, there's only a old shop that used to be a machine shop years ago. It's now a plumbing company.
Now, is, is, have those people ever complained about the buildings?
Not to my knowledge.
Isn't there a resident south of there that belongs to Ms. Ruth?
Probably a thousand feet, quarter mile.
Is that before you get down to the US eighty-two where?
Correct.
And does anybody live in Ms. Ruth's residence?
I believe she does.
Okay.
And the daughter lives in the other one.
Have you ever seen any children at that residence?
No.
Has anybody ever complained to you that said they live there and they didn't like to look for your property?
No.
Or that they were afraid of? Have you ever had an incident reported to the police department or sheriff's department about anybody in that property hurting themselves or trespassing or anything like that? Nobody from the code enforcement called to you about that property to try to negotiate something about it before they instigated this action back in?
Nobody, no.
Last year, was it?
Nobody's ever talked to them.
And in fact, this is the second proceeding about this property that you've been up here about?
And there was, I believe, one before that that I wasn't aware of.
And in that case, was that the one where you appeared up here?
Some were, yeah.
Right, and they had a preliminary procedure where they said that here. Do you understand that?
I'm not aware, I just showed up.
Alright. Is that the proceeding at which you objected to there being trespassing on the property without, without notice to you about, or even permission?
That is correct.
And objected to the fact that if they're gonna do that, they need a search warrant? And even in light of your objection, they went ahead and adjudicated it that evening?
I'm not sure what they did, but I think so.
Well, the minutes would reflect, were they not?
Correct.
And now we're back here again, were you advised that that search warrant be issued at any time?
No.
Did the, no officer tell you to ask for your, not consent, but just a notice by you that that is gonna go down there and you search?
I got something in the mail.
Do you have keys to some of the doors?
Excuse me?
Do you have keys to some of the doors?
Yes, I have keys to all the doors.
Anything further, Mr. Goodwin?
May I please just, I know you're in a hurry.
No, we've, we've got four of these to do, so just trying to make sure we're moving
If there's some kind of action taken against you, do, do you, do you want the city to send the code enforcement people out to tell you or give you a specification of what to do?
That would give me some idea of what they see as the problem.
Otherwise, you understand you're here to definitely determine whether it's going to be torn down or not.
I'm not sure what they're planning to do.
But, but nobody's given you any type of specification like this door needs to be secured, plywood needs to be over this window?
No.
How much of that building can be saved?
A hundred percent.
Is it all brick on the ins, all brick all the way around?
All brick all the way around.
And has there been damage to the rafters in there?
I've replaced one or two rafters in the past, but I don't think there's any that's bad now.
Okay. And was there a reason that you had not repaired it in the last year or so?
I've done some work on it, haven't done a lot, look on the health problems.
And are health problems still kind of in your way on that?
They're still in my way.
And I believe you had a step in your family also?
Correct.
Your co-owner, your brother, your wife? Is that the most valuable parcel out of all four of these?
Yes.
That's all I have.
Alright, thank you. You wanted to ask Officer Perez a couple of questions?
I do.
And this is not a courtroom, so just, just be thinking about that as you inquire.
Ms. Perez, you did the first inspection on this property on September one, twenty twenty three, right?
Yes.
Okay. And you didn't have a search warrant for that, did you, did you?
No.
And you didn't request permission to go on the property?
Yes.
And you are a trained police officer?
Yes.
And you're also a trained code enforcement officer or business of code enforcement skills?
Yes.
And you never understood the fact that you had to get a search warrant to go involuntarily?
Yeah, it was peaceful from the, where it was placed.
But, but you didn't stop there, did you? You went on the property and went ahead and took photographs, right?
Yes, I did.
Now, the minutes would, will tell us what happened at the last hearing on that matter that started then, but it appears to me based on what I've reviewed in minutes that you started all over again on January fourth, twenty twenty-nine, twenty twenty-four, am I right?
Yes.
And on the day that you did that, did you recollect the fact that you'd already gone on there without a warrant?
Yes, I did.
Well, I understand that, but you not asked any of my questions. Did you not, did you not recollect the fact that you'd already gone on the property without a warrant?
Yes.
And did you recollect that you, according to you, discovered more extensive damage than what you could see from the roadway at that time? And you actually went in the property, right? Into, into the structure?
Previous?
Yes, ma'am.
We did not go into a structure at any time.
Did you take photographs through a window or a door?
Yes.
Did you open the door or window?
No.
Was the window or door open?
You could see through the door.
Okay, so every door on there was secure?
Oh, except for the broken windows.
Okay, and how many broken windows are there? Okay. And they're not so broken that they couldn't be repaired or either put, have plywood put over them, are they?
Yes.
And it's doors too?
Yes.
If the doors needed to be secured, any further, they would just be unlocked?
Yes, sir.
Or are these Lulun doors or are they steel doors or put off, whatever? So you would agree with me that there is a possible way to secure this building from people going into it?
Yes, sir.
By potentially putting something like that on there, plywood or other, other devices to get people out of there? And the only thing that you were concerned about as code officer is the safety of public to prevent any, any kind of injuries or, or menace to the public from this building being in that condition? Would you agree with me then that the, possibly the least restrictive alternative is to designate what openings in the building need to be?
I think that.
I don't believe she gets to answer that question. That's beyond her expertise, yeah.
This is the board's decision.
Well, gee, before the board, it wasn't her opinion unless it was y'all's opinion to instruct her to go do it. So, I mean.
I'm not answering questions either.
I know.
Her opinion about what needs to be done to that property.
Alright.
It matters not, it's the board's decision.
Alright, I asked, I answered my question, you, you stopped me, I understand, I'm making my record.
Vice Mayor?
The attorney needs to give our attorney an opportunity to respond to the question so the record be clear, ask his response to the record, so counsel should not interrupt our attorney while he's addressing and answering questions and giving comments. He needs to wait until the attorney yields, then he can proceed according to the direction of the chair.
Thank you, thank you, Vice Mayor. Mr. Goodwin?
And I apologize for the interruption, both of you.
Anything further?
I, I just want to make it clear that y'all are not going to be allowed, y'all are not going to allow me to ask her an opinion about what can be done to secure the property.
That's correct.
You, did you prepare the, the, the public hearing notice?
Yes.
And did you copy the statute into that notice? Or is that some kind of boilerplate that you've always used? Or is that some kind of a boilerplate that you've always used?
It's a template that we use for all public hearings.
Okay. And does it contain the words? As exactly set forth in the statute? That, four words, securing abandoned or dilapidated buildings. Now, this right here, what you said, said removing, right?
It says.
All right, that's, what's the, removing would be the verb. What's the object?
Uh, let's don't, let's don't do that.
I think it speaks for itself. I'll move on now.
Thank you. Thank you. Okay.
So you don't take, you don't take it in hand to try to figure out what can be done to secure it? You just determine whether or not it should be recommended to be destroyed or taken down? Right?
The process we use is the property on which was the notice of the violation. I received no response from them. And from there, we move forward to the property on.
You heard my, you heard Mr. Prossac testify, right?
Yes, ma'am.
It, what did, it's best to your knowledge, did he state the facts about the locations of other, other properties in that area? Where residences were, other things on that road?
Yes, sir.
Are you aware of any reports from anyone or about any injuries occurring to anybody on that property as a result of its present condition? To any, about any member of the public?
No, Sean, I haven't. I just want to check and get back to the record.
Okay. Are you aware, and you can get that easily from 911.
Right.
But you didn't do that for the next year?
No.
Have you determined if there's any complaints to the city about the condition of that property from any member of the public?
No.
Are you aware of it?
No.
Is that, is that one of the complaints you say about some of the city department or city employee? Is it usually referred to the code office for initial investigation?
Yes, but we also just don't think it's worth discovering them on our own while we're driving around the city.
And do you have that, who designated you to go out there that very first day back in September?
When I discovered it while we were driving through the area.
On a Saturday?
Yes, I've been working on Saturdays from age.
Why don't y'all work on Saturdays?
Mr. Goodwin, that, that's. Mr. Goodwin, that is one of the, we have code enforcement six days a week. That's, that is our choice.
So nobody's ever directed you to go out there on any particular day or anything to look at this particular piece of property?
No.
That's all I have.
All right. Thank you, sir. Uh, thank you, Officer Perez. All right. I'll open it as a public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak to this matter now is your opportunity, either for or against. Mr. Turner?
Being, being the second vice president of NAACP, our, we as people have to follow the laws that is instructed at any time that we want to do our own thing. Uh, it draws attention that, uh, we ought to obey the laws of the land as well as laws of law. But the laws of the land, you have to govern by the earth's system. And when we try to go around, uh, uh, the law, people pay their attention. Our, but, but the wrong is badging the people that's in authority to try to make this a safe place to live.
Thank you, Mr. Turner. Anyone else? Anyone else?
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is James Welch, and I have a problem. This room, I, I don't know whether I'm hearing impaired or not, but I can't hardly hear anything you all saying. And I'm here on behalf of Yellow Jacket Drive.
Oh, Mr. Welch, I am so sorry. We have already, we've already handled that matter and we, we approved it.
Yes, ma'am.
We approved that, that home or that special, special exception. We, we approved it. Was it your, was it your property?
Well, I, I, I didn't hardly, I seen it on the, on the screen.
Yes, sir.
But I couldn't hear what was going on.
I'm very sorry to hear that. Um, but we approved that, that property, okay? So this is not about that property. Mr. Havilin can, can visit with you if that's okay?
Okay.
All right. That gentleman right back there, he'll visit with you about it, okay? I'm so sorry you couldn't hear.
Thank you, ma'am.
Uh huh. All right. Anyone else about this particular matter? All right. Yes, ma'am. Alden Sishtrom?
I, I have a question for, uh, Mr. Prossak about your tenant.
If you would come up here, Mr. Prossak, to answer, please, sir, so we'll have you have the mic capability?
I've, I've been told that Mr. Dollison is a military veteran. Is that correct?
I think that's correct.
And I've, I've also been told that there are a group of veterans here in town who've tried to help him or encourage him to find a place, uh, some other place to live, um, because they felt that where he was living is unsafe. Is that, are you aware of that?
I'm not aware of that.
Okay.
He doesn't want to move. His choice.
Thank you.
Anything else, Alden Sishtrom?
No, ma'am.
Okay. Anyone else?
Well, I, I can say that I have heard from a number of people who apparently live in Highland, Highland Estates and, and drive through there, that they have stopped on numerous occasions to offer Mr. Dollison some assistance, some food or whatever. And I certainly have heard complaints about the property in the past. And I've driven by there, so I am, I'm fairly familiar with how it looks from the road. I did not encroach, but, um, I think it is, um, I think we gave Mr. Prossak an opportunity to make some repairs a number of months ago, and I don't see that there's been any change necessarily. But, um, any other board members who wish to weigh in on this?
Anyone?
All right. Alden Brooks?
Yes.
I'm, I'm sorry.
I'm not. Do you want to go?
You go ahead.
Or, no, I'll let you.
All right.
I, I'm just looking at, at some of the numbers that, um, Mr. Godwin mentioned a while ago, and this is on the tax records and, and, you know, they're saying the building's forty-five hundred square feet. I mean, I had measured. I don't know if that's right or not. It looks probably right. Um, and they, they have, as Mr. Godwin said, a, a value of thirty-six thousand dollars on that, which actually comes out to about eight dollars a square foot. Their cost numbers, because the county, when they do, when they do value in property, they don't, they don't value like appraisers do by using the sales comparison analysis or, or even the income. They, they simply, they, they try to get to a cost number by, uh, square footage of the building and then any utility buildings, they'll take a, a less factor in garages or even a less factor to, to get to one number that they can multiply a, uh, a, a cost amount by to come off the bay. And then they apply depreciation. Well, they're, they're effectively saying this building is eighty-five percent gone. They're saying it's fifteen percent of, you know, value. Their, their original value was fifty-one dollars a square foot, and now we're down to about eight, you know? And, and as someone who, who buys buildings or buys property and renovates them, uh, you know, and I'm just looking at the picture, but, um, at, at some point, we, we look at the highest and best use, and if the building itself is not worth more than the, than the land, then, you know, the highest and best use is, is, is to redevelop that piece of property or, you know, put something else on it. Uh, and, and, you know, my opinion, as the appraiser and, and from looking at it up here, is, is that you, you very well reached that point here, uh, because, I mean, it's got substantial damage to it and it's gonna take a considerable amount of, of effort and expense to, uh, to make that thing happen, uh, just from what I'm seeing from the picture. I've not been out there other than riding down the road. I have ridden down the road a time to have appraised some property in the whole world, but, uh, it, it, uh, so it, it's, it's in pretty tough shape. So that's my opinion.
All right. Thank you, Alden Brooks. Alden Moore?
I just want to make a comment. Officer Perez, thank you for what you do. And the fact is not whether she did her job correctly and whether anybody complained. Everybody in this room can see that that building is not livable. And the fact that somebody is living there and you are asking what needed to be done to bring that building... How long have you owned the property, if you don't mind me asking?
Mr. Prossak, if you'd come up, Mr. Prossak, if you'd come up and, and answer at the mic, so we all have that.
Hold your question.
How long have you owned the property?
The land or building?
The building.
Nineteen seventy-eight.
Okay. Um, like you were, they were saying that wanted to know if somebody complained about the structure. Like, it, that's not the fact. The fact is that it is not up to code and the fact that somebody's living there. And you were asking what needed to be done to bring the building up to code? I don't know that Officer Perez could make that decision. I'm a general contractor and I can look at that and tell you, I can't make that decision by looking at that. So it felt like she did what she needed to do on her end of it, but.
Well, I think also, if I may, were you, I'm sorry. Uh, if I recall, you, you are a building inspector. You told us you were a building inspector in West Point, so I would say that you probably of all the people would know exactly what needed to be done to make that building safe and up to code.
I've been involved with construction since nineteen sixty, so I've got a pretty good idea.
I felt sure that you did. Thank you. All right. Anyone, Alden Bate?
Oh, let me, let me ask Alden, uh, Ms. Perez, Officer Perez, do we condemn properties based on their being dilapidated or our definition of the dilapidated? Do we condemn properties based on their being dilapidated? Is that something that we, of, of some, something in our codes that we follow is the condition of the property that we would define as dilapidated?
If we define them as dilapidated, would we commit it? Would we allow the property owner a chance to repair it?
Oh, well, since I've got Mr. Prossak, let me ask you this. Uh, Mr. Prossak, what's the age of the roof on that building?
Excuse me?
What's the age of the roof on that building?
About twenty years.
That, that, that roof's twenty years old?
And it, uh, wasn't put on correctly.
What, if any, other upgrades have been done in the last twenty years to that building?
It's been a good bit of repair from time to time. And, uh, it's, uh, it's had enough holes knocked in the sheet rock that most of the inter- interior sheet rock has got to be ripped down and replaced just because it's, uh, at some point you have to quit patching where people knocked holes in them.
Oh, is there a photo of just the house itself? I mean, just the whole house without it, without, had to be partial photos? Do we have one, one that wanted to show the whole, whole building?
That's the back side, I believe. North side of the building, the whole building.
You say that roof's twenty years old?
Counsel said it wasn't put on correctly.
Some of it was, uh, instead of tearing the shingles off, it was overlaid. And when you overlay shingles, they don't last. Some of them just, you could take your foot and kick them off at this point.
Webster Dictionary defines dilapidated property as decayed, fallen into, fallen to partial ruin, injured by bad usage or neglect. I would say this certainly falls into the category of what I would consider to be dilapidated, uninhabitable property. Is this property, you've got, do you have a tenant, a current tenant in this property right now?
Do what?
Is there a tenant in this property, in this building? Do you have somebody renting this building, living in this building?
There's one guy living in there. He's been living there twenty-something years.
I mean, I'm an Alden, I, I, I'll state my opinion. That's deplorable property and that's deplorable living conditions. And, uh, it's hard to believe that somebody could live in that, in that structure. And I know that we, as a city, have an obligation, and we've done it in the past to try to condemn properties that we felt like are in dilapidated, in my opinion, the, the deplorable condition. This is the, as bad or maybe the worst property I've seen in the city staff since I've been on the board. Uh, and so we can go back and forth with your attorney and we can define what's what, determine this and make all, all this legal jargon back and forth and stuff, but, but the crux of the thing is that is a deplorable property. It is our job. It's incumbent on these seven people on this board and this mayor, the city government, city staff, to make, to try to do something to, and if it means condemnation, condemnation of properties that are in deplorable condition, there are just awful living conditions. We've done some more in town, and we don't do it because we're trying to get after any individual per se. We're not trying to do that. We're trying to improve the living conditions for people that, that is in the city limits now, corporate limits, that live inside our corporate limits now. That's, uh, that's our only thing. We're not, we're not going after you personally. We're trying to pick, try to find the worst properties in town as we start, you know, that we can define as the worst properties in town. And I know your attorney probably comes and say, well, there are probably a lot of other, there are, there are other, there are other properties in town that, that we, give them time, we will, we will probably, you know, do that to, to these other properties. We will start the process on those. But all we doing right now is, 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 we are, we are in semantics of, you know, whether somebody was on the property, you know, wanting the property. I know there may be some legal, you know, probably, you're saying there's legal implication that, uh, uh, counsel, but the, the, from the first time we got on the property, the, you know, there's, you know, we didn't have any profit, any reason to be on the property. I assure you, all our city code person was doing was trying to inspect property that according to the definition I'm looking at is deplorable, it's not, it's not deplorable, is deplorable, but it is dilapidated. And anybody, particularly us, but standard, uh, Webster Dictionary definition of, of dilapidate is dilapidated. And that's our, that's our job as a city government, is to, to determine, to find those properties, determine where they are and to, to mitigate or, or eliminate that problem. And, um, so, uh, that's, that's what we're doing. And we can go back and forth on this all, but, 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 uh, mayor, in my opinion, we need to stay the course on this and, and, and make sure that, that, uh, that this property is either brought up to some minimal standard of code or that it's, it's condemned and removed more than all.
Thank you. Um, Mr. Prossak, I believe when we first appeared, when we first started talking about this property, you had indicated at the time that you were going to bring this one up and you were going to do something about it and you were going to come up to the building department. And I don't recall that we ever heard from you on how you were going to manage that. So, have, well, let me ask my question. Have you done anything since last year to these properties to him?
I've done some. Not a whole lot.
To this property?
Not a whole lot.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Anyone else? Any other questions? Okay. Seeing none.
May I say something?
Uh, if you would like to come to the mic?
Just to respond to what, uh, what's
Just to respond to what, uh, was asked of my client, and I think he'll verify it. The late, the man that lives in there and has lived there twenty years, he does not, we've, we've called him a tenant or, you know, I guess a tenant has suffered, but he doesn't pay for anything to Mr. Priceoff.
Okay. I have no idea what their arrangement is and it's really not germane to the health and safety of that particular location. Thank you, sir. All right. All right. Seeing no further discussion, I need a motion.
I make a motion.
Your motion to find that it is a menace to public health, safety, and welfare of the community such that demolition could occur? All right. I have a second from, uh, Alderman Beatty. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right. Motion carries. It is unanimous. All right. Next item is the, uh, two forty-five Ruth Road. And Mr., Mr. Goodwin, before we get started on this, and I apologize, is it Godwin or Goodwin?
Whatever you want.
No, Goodwin, thank you.
The name is written on the document?
Well, it is, but pronunciation is not necessarily written on the document, so I wanted to make sure. Thank you. Um, yes, ma'am. Such that demolition could occur.
Okay.
Yes. Um, all right. I was gonna, I, all right. Go ahead. Sorry. My apologies.
Let's get, I'm here to present a consideration for twenty-one nineteen eleven for dilapidated property on two four five Ruth Road, Starkville, Mississippi, three nine seven five nine, parcel number one five nine J dash zero zero dash zero two eight dot zero one. The property is owned by Dwight Priceoff, shown by the deed. First inspection was on January fourth. Photos taken from the road show deterioration of the roof and walls of the outside of the property. Letter of notice of violation was sent to the property owner on January nineteenth. A second inspection of the property on January twentieth showing no changes had been made to the appearance of the property. All these photos were taken from the road. On January twentieth, an administrative warrant, inspection warrant was signed by Judge Kelly. And the warrant was served on January twenty-first. Was posted on the west, or north side wall of the building. And photographs were taken on the property. As you can see, the large hole in the side of the wall on the north side, as well as the deterioration of the roof and the holes in the walls. A certified letter notice of violation was sent to the property owner on January twenty-second, as well as certified mail of the administrative inspection warrant sent to the property owner. And a notice of the public hearing, first public hearing, was sent to the property owner on February seventh, certified mail. It was also posted in the front windows of the city hall. And on February eighth, posted on the building on the north side wall. Photos taken from the roadway showing no change in the appearance of the property. On February twenty-second, the final inspection, still showing no change in the appearance of the property. The second notice of public hearing was mailed certified mail on March sixth to the property owner, posted at city hall in the front window, on the north wall of the property, and photos taken from the roadway.
Okay. And, um, were there, was there anyone living in this building?
No, ma'am.
Did it, was there, um, openings or gaps or something that you could have gone? And you chose not to go in, I assume?
Yes.
Were there openings and gaps that you could have gone in?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. So, it is not secure in any way?
No, ma'am.
Okay. All right. Um, and you, your first pictures that you took were from the road?
Yes, ma'am.
That's correct. You did not enter until you had gotten a warrant from Judge Kelly? Is that correct?
Yes, ma'am. That is correct. All the photos taken from the property itself are with the warrant. All other photos were taken from the roadway.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Any questions of Officer Perez? All right. Seeing none, thank you. Mr. Goodwin, are you going to come again or, or?
I'm gonna come again.
Okay. All right. No honor here, but...
Couple of questions. I'm gonna be a lot greater. I got a couple of questions.
You will start with questions from her?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Officer Perez, would you come back up, please? And we'll get a couple of questions and then any presentation you wish to make.
Officer Perez, the, uh, procedures by which we went through on this first hearing we had, on that, on that five flat or on that multifamily dwelling? Is that, this, everything was done on it on the same days that you did this?
Yes, sir.
Property, right? So, you took it house by house rather than, rather than parcel by parcel of the taxman? I mean, you did, you did it all the same day on all four?
Yes, sir.
Right? And that includes going out there without that search warrant back in, uh, twenty twenty-three, right? And going through the first process, right? All right. At that time, did you go into the house and take pictures? The pre, the pre, in this house, did you go into the, when you went out there the first time for the first proceeding, did you text the pictures of the interior?
No, sir.
If you did, they would be showing up in your, in that, in that proceeding, would they not?
Yes, sir.
You've withheld any pictures or anything like that?
No, sir.
You'd give us all you have?
Yes, sir.
May I have just a moment?
Yes, sir. Thank you.
We, we would just incorporate, insofar as it's relevant, the previous statements made in the first public hearing on the multifamily dwelling.
Okay. All right. Thank you, sir. I appreciate that. Mr. Priceoff, if you'd come up just a second, I have, I just have a couple of questions 'cause this is, this property, whoop, I lost the pictures. Um, this property has no one living in it, correct?
That's correct.
And this is, is this the one that you indicated you wanted to tear down and you would be willing for us to burn, as I recall?
That's, uh, something that would probably be good. It's, uh, you could spend a lot of money in it, which you could never recover. It's, it's not a economical thing to, to repair that.
Okay.
That house is about a nineteen thirty house, by the way.
Okay. All right. But, uh, my recollection is correct that that was one, that was the house that you were, that you indicated would be good?
I've gotta find somebody to dig up the water line so it can be capped from, uh, because I've got a central water system out there with well. And if it were burned, it would make quite a mess. Sad. So far, I haven't found anybody that would dig it. I can't do it with a machine because it'll rip stuff out.
Okay. All right. All right. Thank you. That was, that was my question. Anyone on the board have any questions of Mr. Priceoff, Mr., or Officer Perez? All right. Seeing none at this point, I'll open it as a public hearing. Anyone wishing to comment at this point in time now would be, now would be the, the time. Mr. Turner?
Once again, being a member of the NACT, uh, Brooklyn Guard, Catherine Street, here. The old places were places that, yeah, we hadn't did anything. It was drug infested. This place, is it part of the annex or not? But, uh, we are, uh, to uphold the law, do what's right, uh, and no one is above the law. We, we do not have nearly the problem that others, uh, uh, see as hell and we are blessed. But we have procedures and stuff that we have to follow and we cannot do for everyone else and not do for others.
Thank you, sir. All right. Anyone else? Anyone else? Close it as a public hearing? Discussion among the board? Alderman Brooks?
I just want to add one thing about what the tax folks have here. They've got this building valued at five hundred dollars. Fifty-two cents a square foot, their house.
Okay.
I thought I would add.
All right. Thank you.
Which is the second building? The second building?
Yes, sir. The second, the one we just looked at.
Five hundred dollars.
Five hundred dollars. All right. Any, any discussion? All right. I need a motion.
Move to.
I have a motion from Alderman Vaughn, and that would be to find that, uh, the building located at two forty-five Ruth Road, Starkville, Mississippi, parcel number is in such a state of uncleanliness as to be a menace to the public health, safety, and welfare of the community and such that demolition could occur? Demolition will occur? Do you want to put demolition will occur?
Yes, ma'am.
All right. We will put demolition will occur. Uh, I'm gonna, uh, first, uh, motion from Alderman Vaughn to have a second. Second from Alderman Brooks. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. It is unanimous.
Ma'am, I wonder how long it's gonna take them to get the water fixed so we can...
Uh, well, we'll, we'll have to work our way through that. That may be something we have to take care of in order to make that happen. But we will, we will do the process properly.
Okay.
Second public hearing? This is, will be for three oh five Ruth Road? I'm sorry, third, my apologies, third public hearing. It is actually the second public hearing, but it is the third of the second public hearings, so...
Once again, I'm here to present consideration for twenty-one nineteen eleven on property at three zero five Ruth Road, Starkville, Mississippi, three nine seven five nine, parcel number one five nine J dash zero zero dash zero two eight dot zero one. This property is owned by Dwight Priceoff, as found by the deed. On January fourth, the first inspection, photos taken from the roadway. The deterioration of parts of the roof and siding, as well as some broken windows, can be seen from the roadway. A, the, a notice of violation was sent to the property owner on January nineteenth. On January twentieth, a second inspection was done showing no change had been made to the property. All photos were taken from the roadway. On January twentieth, a administrative inspection warrant was obtained from Judge Kelly. On January twenty-first, the, uh, warrant was executed on, and posted on the north side window of the property. The property, the photos taken on the property show the details of the broken windows and damage to the outside of the house, as well as some holes in the roof. The, uh, second notice of the violation was sent certified mail to the property owner on January second, as well as a copy of the administrative inspection warrant sent certified mail. And the public hearing notice for the first public hearing sent certified mail on February seventh. Also posted in the front window of the city hall and posted on February eighth on the structure on the north side wall window. Photos taken from the roadway show no changes had been made to the property. On February twenty-second, the final inspection was showing photos from the roadway showing no changes had been made. On March sixth, the second notice of public hearing was mailed certified mail to the property owner, posted at city hall in the front window and posted on the property in the north side window. Photos taken from the roadway show no changes had been made to the property.
Same question. Any idea that anyone is living there or not living there?
No, ma'am.
Okay. When, when you went on the property, was it secure in any way?
There were some broken windows.
You had broken windows?
But there was no doors open.
No doors open? Okay. All right. Thank you. Uh, any questions of Officer Perez? All right. Seeing none. Mr. Goodwin, would you like to come? You want, you wish to ask her, inquire of her? Okay. All right. Officer Perez, would you stay, stay with us, please?
Officer Perez? What's up? Taxing both of our rights. Can you tell me if the same information that you elicited in the first hearing about the dates and times of your inspections are coincide with the inspections on this property?
Yes, sir, there is.
All right. And as I understand you, the question the mayor asked, there are no doors or openings that people can get into this property that are just wide open or anything like that, right?
No, they're not wide open. They're not just broken off.
When you say the windows are broken, are you talking about the glass panes or are you talking about the, like, the whole thing, the sash, if there's everything?
Several glass panes.
Just panes, and like the windows? Okay. And of course, that's normally on a house, right?
I don't know.
Well, most houses normally have glass panes and windows, don't they? And that prevents somebody from coming in, right?
They should have windows, I'd say.
Well, those windows can be also be more, that property can be also further secured, could it not, by putting plywood up over the windows and the doors? Okay. That's all I have of Ms. Perez.
Thank you, Mr. Goodwin. Did you have anything further that you wished to share with the board?
I think we wished to have, have you note that there is the same problem with the water on this property, each of the chief to destroy.
I wouldn't destroy this one.
No, no. The property... Sorry, sorry.
That's okay.
Mr. Priceoff submits that the same problem with the water on all four tracks, all four houses exist, is a central well. And if somebody comes in there without those feet dug up and capped, it presents a problem for service to the whole, the whole area. And that central well is a value if anything is destroyed by the city and we need to come out there and rebuild in the same place.
Noted. All right. Thank you. All right. Any other questions of either Officer Perez or, um, Mr. Priceoff from anyone? All right. As my recollection...
Ma'am? I just asked in my comments that I made about in the first hearing being incorporated by reference.
Under, under...
General comments.
Understood. Understood. Thank you. And as I recall, we had given Mr. Priceoff some time to make repairs to this building as well. I had, did not go back and reconsult minutes from previous board meeting about it, but I know that we had given him some grace on, uh, all but the one that is the previous one. So, um, do I have any discussion? Do I have a motion?
Motion.
A motion from Alderman Beatty, and that is to, uh, determine that three oh five Ruth Road is in such a state of uncleanliness as to be a menace to the public health, safety, and welfare of the community such that demolition will occur?
That's correct, ma'am.
All right. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second from Alderman Rupp. No further discussion. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. It's unanimous. All right. Second, fourth, second public hearing, fourth public hearing, um, and consideration for three twenty-five Ruth Road. Last, last public hearing on this, of the evening.
Once again, I'm here to present a consideration for twenty-one nineteen eleven on dilapidated property at three two five Ruth Road, Starkville, Mississippi, three nine seven five nine, parcel number one five nine J dash zero zero dash zero two eight dot zero one. This property is owned by Dwight Priceoff, found by the deed. January fourth, the first inspection, photos taken from the road... January 4th, the first inspection, photos taken from the road show deterioration in the roof of the structure. These photos show from the road, a zoomed-in photo of the back of the structure, the wall is completely torn out. On January 19th, a first notice of violation was mailed to the property owner. On January 20th, the second inspection, showing photos taken from the roadway, that no change had been made in the appearance of the property. The administrative inspection warrant was obtained on January 20th, signed by Judge Kelly. On January 21st, the inspection warrant was executed. Photos taken show detailed photos of the damages of the property. No repairs had been made. A copy of this inspection warrant was posted on the front door of the property on the north side of the building. This is the back of the structure. The roof is completely caved in on the majority of it, the wall is caved in. The, underneath the door is a space opening where rodents and such can enter, as well as the window above the left side is open. There is also a hole in the wall on the left side of the stairwell. On January 22nd, notice of the violation was once again sent to the property owner on certified mail, and the administrative inspection warrant was also mailed certified mail. A notice of the first public hearing was mailed certified mail on January 7th. Also posted in the front window of City Hall, and on the front door of the structure on the north side of the property on February 8th. Photos taken from the roadway showing no change had been made to the property. On February 22nd, a final inspection for the first public hearing, photos from the roadway showing no changes had been made to the property. On March 6th, a second public hearing notice was issued, mailed certified mail to the property owner, posted at City Hall in the front window, and on the front door of the north side of the property, and photos taken from the roadway showing no change had been made.
All right, thank you. And again, there's no one living at this, at this?
Not to my knowledge.
Address? And there were places that were clearly exposed?
Yes, ma'am.
That could be gotten into, and you said, did you, like, see animals making it a home?
No, ma'am.
Okay, all right. You mentioned it, as I was just double checking.
The possibilities.
And, and at one point in time, did you not, did you try to give Mr. Priceok a call?
I had attempted a phone number that I had found that was a possible contact for him, and it was a disconnected line.
Okay, all right. I thought I remembered you had tried to call him at one point in time.
Yes, ma'am.
I just wanted to be clear about that. And everything you started, you began from the road, is that accurate?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, all right, thank you. Any questions of Officer Perez? Alderman?
And you did follow the same procedures with this property as you did the prior three, correct?
Yes, ma'am.
Same date, timeframe, thank you.
Okay, anyone, anyone else? All right, seeing none, thank you, ma'am. You may step back. Mr. Goodwin, anything differently?
That's very good, but that's not exactly the way I was gonna ask you. I just had one question.
Would you come, would you come back up, please?
Officer Perez, the previous te, the previous statements that you've made about this property, especially your, the sequence of events in the two cases involving property, the first property, we were here about the multifamily dwelling, did you take that same sequence of events in this case?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Did you have any, did you have any photographs of the interior?
No, sir.
Of the property at either time?
No, sir.
And you didn't go into the interior?
No, sir.
There was no way for you to go into the interior?
No, sir, not to my knowledge.
Okay, so no way for any person to get in?
Not to my knowledge.
Unless they broke something?
Yes, sir.
Okay, but there were some holes, I think you said, under the door?
Yes, there was a space under the door, or large enough for an animal, but not a person.
Was there a crawl space? Is there a crawl space under the door?
The stairs, yes, there was a larger hole.
Yeah, but it, was it into the crawl space, or was it into the actual dwelling itself?
Under the door, yes, it was under the actual door.
So you could see the floor of the dwelling? You could see what?
You could see the floor, through the door.
That's all I have.
All right, thank you. That back area that was caved in, that was inaccessible by virtue of being dangerous, was it not?
It very dangerous.
Yes, okay, that's what I thought. Thank you, all right. Any, any further discussion? Any other questions? All right, seeing none, we have reached the point where we could take a motion.
Then incorporate my reference, ma'am.
Yes, sir, you may, we will.
The statements made.
Understood.
The statements made.
Yes, sir. And your, and your submission.
Yes.
Yes, sir. Oh, did I not open it as a public hearing? I'm so sorry, thank you so much. I feel like I've done it several times. All right, now is the opportunity to open it for a public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak to this matter, now would be the opportunity. Now would be the time, either for or against. All right, seeing none, I will close it as a public hearing. Thank you, Alderman Sistrunk. All right, entertaining a motion at this point in time?
Make a motion.
Yeah, a motion is, would that be to determine that it, this parcel, this address of 325 Ruth Road is in such a state of uncleanliness as to be a menace to the public health, safety, and welfare of the community, and such that demolition should occur?
Yes, ma'am.
All right, I have a motion from Alderman Vaughn. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second from Alderman Vaughn. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It is unanimous, thank you so much. All right, moving along, we have a claim stocket, and I believe that will.
Do we have what, street improvement?
Oh, I'm sorry, yes, we do have the street improvement. I'm, claim stocket was sitting right next to it. All right, we have a street improvement plan, which we had a presentation on at the work session. Does anyone have any questions of Mr. Burnett? Are we ready to vote on that?
Miss approval?
I have a motion for approval from Alderman Sistrunk. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second from Vice Mayor Perkins. Any discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Excellent, all right. Mr. Burnett, you can get to work. That's very exciting. All right, claim stocket, do I have a motion?
So moved.
I have a motion from Alderman Rupp. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second from Alderman Brooks. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
May.
Motion carries.
Ma'am, may I comment for opposed?
Mr. Beatty, yes, you may. Hang on, just let me, let me make sure I'm at the, yep, we're at the end. You may comment for Mr. Beatty. Go right ahead.
With the tabling of the, the fire department, that grant application tonight, I think we prohibited the chief from coming forward to bring us some valuable information about personnel and hiring that would, will be material to us going forward, as with, not only with this grant application, but, but in the, the quest to, I think, that what the grant application, what we're trying to do now is to get Station 5 back open, and, and I, not everyone attends Friday work meetings to be able to have this information disseminated to them. And so, I mean, I don't know, I guess it's too late, and I guess by tabling it, through, through a motion and resolution, we don't get to talk about it, but at the same time, I know our fire chief came prepared tonight to say, to make some, to give us some information. And I think as board members, this information, we probably needed, we probably needed prior to going into the me, the next work meeting. But I would suggest that we all attend the next work meeting, and that one of the priorities of that meeting be the grant application for the FEMA grant to, to, if we're successful to reopen the fire station, if not, we, and, and along with that, we need to hear from our fire chief, and, and hear from him about his thoughts and his opinions about our personnel at the fire department. It's been hard in the past to get, but I, and I don't know what the chief is gonna say, you know, I've not been briefed, I've not been briefed on that. But I, and I think that we should all be in attendance, so that, that, that can be, that information can be disseminated, so we can make an informed decision as, as the grant application is submitted, and we get information about whether we'll be awarded that or not. And if not that, our contingency plan, our fallback plan for trying to get Station 5 back open.
All right, thank you, Mr. Beatty. Well, let me say this, the next board work session is the 26th, and I will call for that here in a moment. It is dedicated to the Garver Engineering Report for the wastewater treatment plant, which will take, take a good portion of that. The agenda will not be ready, but since the chief was ready tonight, I would suggest that at the next board meeting, he will be ready to make that presentation to us in its fullest, and I expect that he will get every piece of information he wants to provide to us, to us prior to that, so that the board will have as much information as possible prior to the next board meeting. So I think we will have full attendance at the next work session, based on the nature of the particular subject matter. But anyway, Vice Mayor Perkins, I believe you want to be.
Just one question.
Yes, sir.
I do, I do not recall the chief being at the work session on this past Friday, was he? He was there this past Friday, but?
I don't believe he was.
I don't think so.
John, the assistant, the acting assistant chief was there, so.
Right, because the question was asked to the acting chief, and the chief was not there.
Right.
And that work session was in preparation for tonight's meeting.
Correct.
And then, so he wasn't there, so.
Correct.
We all, including myself, we joined in by watching it, didn't I see that?
Right.
Thank you, ma'am.
Yes, sir. So I believe the chief will have a full-throated opportunity at the next board meeting, and you will provide us, prior to that, all the information that you're gonna want us to know prior to that, right? Okay, sounds great, thank you. All right, Alderman Rupp.
I promise this will be quick.
Okay.
I, I think I speak on behalf of all or most of the board in thanking Officer Perez for her professionalism. You should not have been the one being questioned. I think if the, a fraction of the energy that went into attacking you had gone into actually working on these buildings, they might not have had to have been here tonight. So I appreciate your professionalism.
Yes, we will certainly.
I'll make a comment about that, too.
We will certainly echo that, and, and while it was somewhat of a mild cross-examination, and I believe you withstood it fine, and you did exactly what you needed to do, so thank you for that.
Did better than I did, because I was shaking up here, so you did go ahead.
Officer Perez, yeah, see, I'm sorry, Alderman. You did a great job tonight. Kudos to you for your preparation and hanging in there, and only in Mississippi could we, only in Mississippi could we be arguing about the, you know, the, our co-process to condemn properties in that kind of condition, you know, for habitability and, and, and for, you know, for the betterment of the city of Starville. You know, it just, it defies logic sometimes, but, you know, it's where we are. So, but anyway, mayor, are you?
All right, thank you so much. Alderman Vaughn?
Great job, great job, great job. Why the hell department haven't been out there checking the man living in that place like that? And I see why he not charging him anything.
Well, I think he's actually doing work for it, so what they're.
It's an in-kind kind of relationship.
So, anyway, it is, it is incredibly unfortunate, and we will see what we can do to make it, make it better. We will see what we can do to improve the situation, so. All right, if y'all will indulge me, I need to call for a work session. In accordance with the notices required under Mississippi Code annotated 254113, the board will have a work session on Tuesday, the 26th of March, at 11:00 a.m. That meeting will be held at City Hall, second floor conference room, located at 110 West Main. The subject will be the Garver Engineering Report on the Wastewater Treatment Plant. Notice should be provided to this work session within one hour of this meeting, by posting such notice at City Hall. The notice should be made a part of the minutes of the board meeting, and it will be an open public meeting of the city of Starville, and public and press are invited to attend. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
All right.
Alderman Vaughn, next Tuesday night, 6 o'clock, we're dedicating the pickleball court.
Let me, let's conclude, shall we?
Yeah, I got a good idea.
Yes, thank you, Alderman Rupp. So I had a motion, I believe, from Alderman Rupp, and a second from Alderman Vaughn, is that correct? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
That's a great idea, ma'am.
Opposed? Motion carries. We are in adjournment, thank you so much.